Hello. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for January 25th. If you have with you a cellphone or other device that makes noise, now would be a good time to turn it off or down. Okay. The way we do this is, we have a little few things we'll take care of here at the beginning, and then as we go through and call each of the cases in turn, we'll ask the applicant to come down, give us their name and address, tell us what it is they're asking us for. We may or may not have questions for that person. If there are people here who wish to speak, they'll be asked to come down and give us their comments. We may or may not have questions for them. We'll have whatever discussion we have, and then we'll call for a vote. At the very beginning here, the first thing we're going to do is receive the minutes of the January 11th meeting.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to receive the minutes of the January 11th, 2018 meeting. Do you cast your votes, please? They are received. I will tell you, we're, there's six of us here today. I guess there's really only one case on the agenda that has requests for variances included within it. A variance would require six votes, so that'll be kind of a narrow call. I'll leave that up to the applicant to decide whether they want to try to move forward today or continue that case. We'll talk about it anyway. The first thing we'll do here is continuance requests.
Okay. We have two items requesting a continuance. Item B-19 on your agenda for case S.P.U.D. 1018 has asked to defer to February 22nd, and item B-20 for S.P.U.D. 1003 has been withdrawn.
Is there anybody here today who wishes to be heard on either one of those two items? No?
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue items 19 and 20. Would you cast your votes, please? They are continued.
We also received three new requests for continuance for item B-16 on the agenda for case S.P.U.D. 1027 to defer to February 22nd, and for item B-17 for case C.P.A. 10 to defer to February 8, and for B-18 for P.C. 10523, also to February 8.
Is there anybody here today that wishes to be heard on any of those items? Commissioners?
Make a motion to continue the items.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue items 16, 17, and 18. Would you cast your votes, please? They are continued. Let's do consent. We have items that are relatively routine and are put forward on a consent docket. They will not be called individually unless there's somebody here who wants to speak.
And I'll read those for the record. Item number one is C.E. 969. It's for an easement closure located near Northwestern Avenue and Memorial Road. Item number two is C. 6965, the final plat of cobblestone curve, section three. And item three is also a final plat, case C. 6964, for Maple Valley addition.
Is there anybody here today that wishes to be heard on any of those items? Commissioners?
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue items one, two, no, continue, to approve items one, two, and three. Do you cast your votes, please? They are approved.
Next, under items requiring separate vote, is item number four for case A.B.C. 918, and this is for an A.B.C. 3 zoning overlay of an I-2 district located at 1201 West Reno Avenue, Suite C.
Is the applicant present?
I saw him just walk out. I'm not sure where he went, but I know he's here. We can move it till later if he doesn't come back.
If that's agreeable, we'll pass this to the end of the docket.
Moving on to item number five for S.P. 502 to operate a moderate impact institutional use, which is a middle school in the double-A zoning district at 1180 Southwest 44th Street.
Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Yes. Good afternoon. Mason Schwartz, 522 Call Core Drive. The proposal for you is a special permit application for a middle school at the Southwest 44th and Check Hall Road. Site plan shows a middle school in conjunction with an elementary school. The elementary school is already under construction. It's not part of this application, but it's going to be developed in conjunction with the middle school. The middle school intends to hold approximately 500 students with the ability to expand on the northeast corner of the building thereafter with up to 800 students. Amenities are track and field, softball field, tennis courts on the south portion there. And we agree with the T.E. We believe that the application complies with the special permits requirements, and we would ask for your approval and happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, do we have any questions of the applicant? I do have a couple of people signed up to be heard on this matter. Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Yes. I'm sorry, I don't hear well, so if I don't respond correctly, we may have to sign language or something.
Okay.
But my name's Eileen Stevens. I'm a representative of some of the neighbors that are across the street north. The top of that photo is north. That little street there is Gloria Drive that goes into a private neighborhood that's been there about 40 years, I guess. So we're happy to have schools. Everybody likes a school in their neighborhood. Our issue is traffic, the traffic flow. It's a two-lane road, and there's an elementary school to the east of us on Sarah Road, where currently, your little handout talks about that, the cars are lined up along Southwest 44th, east of Highway 4, which is Mustang Road, at the, like around 7:00 and 8:00, and then 2:00 and 3:00 in the afternoon. So we anticipate the same type of traffic flow and traffic jams. We're concerned about emergency vehicles coming in and out. We're concerned about safety. We're concerned about liability. Our road is a private road, and we maintain that. We're concerned about parents parking on our road. Most of us are parents. We like to pick our kids up, but we're concerned about them parking on our private road and the liability involved, and also, it's a gravel road that we maintain as the owners of that road. There's a lack of a stoplight at Southwest 44th and Mustang Road. However, I did talk to several city officials in Leslie Osbourne's office today, and that has been approved by ODOT, and bids are supposed to go out next month for a stoplight. So I just asked for support of that. Funding was pulled a couple of times, and so we almost didn't get that, and so we're concerned about continued funding that that will go through. So we would request for Oklahoma City to consider a center turn lane along Southwest 44th between Mustang Road and Check Hall to help the flow of traffic and to help with emergency vehicles in and out. We request some signs perhaps, no parking signs or no through-street on that Gloria Drive because it's not dead ends. And also, we noticed at Mustang Canyon Ridge that they have signs along Sarah Road that says "No standing, no parking" from, you know, from Southwest 44th to Southwest 29th. However, people do stand and park for probably a mile and a half in both directions because all those roads are two-lane. Is there anything else, Kathy, you want to speak?
I just want to say, I just think it's-
Would you come to the microphone, please? Give us your name and address for the record.
Kathy Madolee, 11913 Southwest 44th Street, Mustang. I'm just going to say that it's been, it's really very dangerous whenever there are several schools and not just the Mustang area, but other areas, whenever emergency vehicles need to get through, like ambulances or fire, and those parents are all lined up. And again, we're all parents, and we all want to pick our kids up. I totally understand that. But I think the answer to this is not even a turn lane. I think it's like a loop so that they can pull in and actually be off the main road because even if you put a turn lane, if you have 500 kids, and let's just say half of them are going to be picked up, then that's 250 people lined up. And I've been told that some of those parents will start two hours before they get out or start because they want to be to the front of the line or whatever, and, you know, we've all been there. So I just think it's a safety issue for the children. I've also seen children go to go across the street to get to the car because the parent, you know, wasn't able to get into the line. I think it's dangerous, and I just think it's dangerous for everybody. I think they really need to concentrate. I mean, if you, Canyon Ridge is very, it's, you're lined up for at least an hour to two hours after school lets out, just on the intersection between 44th and Sarah Road. So I really think they need to have like a loop so that people can pull in and get off the main road. I don't think a turn-in would even take care of the quantity of people that there would be. So that's my issue.
Thank you. As a carpool parent, I can certainly sympathize. Do you want to speak to this issue for us?
Yes. So the middle school is going on the back piece of the property. You'll notice there are several entrances on the site plan that we've put forth. The first and the third go all the way back to the middle school, and it does serve us an entire loop around the property as a whole. So the way I understand the site plan, it's, again, the middle school is several hundred feet back, and you have to drive all the way through to get to that, serving as a loop. As far as the turn lanes go, I understand that generally the impact fee issue is something that will come up with the city, but besides that, I'm not sure what we could immediately do to fix the concerns that I've heard so far.
Where is Gloria Drive?
That was another question I was going to ask.
Yeah, if you could, if you don't mind, just-
There is, we're from Pioneer Estates, just 17 homeowners. It's a private road that runs north, and then it splits east and west, and then it dead ends.
I see it now. Thank you.
Forgot to say there's going to be 600 homes built to the east of the elementary school and the middle school, and they're going to have an outlet onto Southwest 44th. And of course, you can see the new homes on the corner there are already being built, so there's already increased traffic in the area.
Just to be clear, I do not believe that impact fees will in any way, shape, or form result in the construction of D cell lanes for this property, so that's really not a thing, nor would we expect them to. Frankly, I do think that the school has some responsibility to provide for traffic circulations highly anticipatable onsite that will be actually sufficient to the task. My daughter happens to attend class in, so there aren't any of those things, and trying to pick up kids around it is a nightmare for them as well as for the parents. You know, I think the safety issue with respect to cars that come to pick up and drop off kids is something that any school needs to address.
Of course. We have our engineer here today, and I want him to address some of these.
Great.
Alec Bass, Wallace Engineering. We are the civil engineer for the project. Whenever we did go through the permitting process with the elementary school, we had several meetings with Oklahoma City Engineering Department to discuss the traffic concerns related to that. You probably don't, I don't know if you can see the bar scale on that drawing, but that elementary school is actually set back several hundred feet from the road to provide maximum queuing length for the elementary drop-off and pickup. I think we calculated over 1,500 linear feet of queuing space available off premises. Should be known that the elementary schools and the middle schools have different start and stop times, so there are two different bus schedules, two different traffic schedules, so it's not a compounding issue when it comes to the traffic there. And I would say the construction of this middle school would actually give additional queuing space for the drop-off and pickup of the elementary, which is really your larger traffic concern, not so much the middle school that we're asking for today.
Can you show me on this diagram sort of how your traffic flow works for queuing for the middle school?
For the middle school? Okay. Trying to think which one we go in and out of. All right. You can see with the elementary school, we've got the three separate drives that they can come in and out of. Parent traffic is intended to circulate with the furthest west drive, so they'll have the queue space, which is about, I can't remember the exact number.
Do I remember correctly about this, that the buses have a different-
Right. The buses will use the east entrance, and they will come down and loop around the south side of that building. And then the parent traffic is intended to come in the west entrance, come down, and they will, yeah, that curved road right there, they will come down and pick up students on the north side. And then, okay. I was just making sure I wasn't telling you wrong on that one. So-
So it comes, it comes down to that first, I guess I can't quite tell whether the drive goes on around the back or not, but it goes in front of the school, the drive does?
Correct. So it comes north-south, then it tees off and has the curve, and then comes down on the north side before they will come through the loop, turn around, and go back out. In the case of the middle school, I mean, the parents will also probably utilize the east lane to exit as well because there is some connectivity there.
So is it, is it that the, they come down, they kind of make this gooseneck, they turn off in front of what looks like a parking lot there and in front of the school, go, move to the, which direction am I here, east, to that east drive, and then are they intended to go back out that way, or is there actually a circular path where they're going to go back out the way they came in?
For the middle school, the way it's laid out, they could actually exit either way. They could exit out that northeast drive, or they could exit out the northwest drive. And then as far as the queuing in, I'd say there's probably at least 1,500 linear feet there that were back off the road that you could stack cars, and that's just using that entrance. Now, all this will be vetted in the permitting process with Oklahoma City Engineering Department, and they will, as far as the subject of turn lanes or D cell lanes, that will definitely be discussed and could be required as part of the permit after their traffic engineers have a chance to look at it.
Is there also separate parking space or queuing space for the buses for the middle school?
The buses on the middle school, they will come down the east side and loop around the south side of the building and pick up. You can see the long sidewalk around that horseshoe, yeah, that horseshoe there. That's where the buses will queue and leave. And then keep in mind, the traffic concern is mostly focused on the elementary school, not the middle school, and the traffic will occur at different times for these two facilities.
Well, I mean, it's, the traffic concerns are about the elementary school because it's there, right?
Right. Well, it's under construction.
So, okay. Commissioners?
Can you clarify for me, is there a traffic study now in process? Has there been a traffic study? Is there one scheduled?
As far as what City of Oklahoma City currently requires, as you're well aware, the traffic impact fee went into effect, I believe it was early last year or past couple years. So they've gone to not requiring site-specific traffic studies, and they do the traffic impact fee instead. We have actually, in our discussions with Oklahoma City Engineering, we have gotten bus schedules and gotten the percentage of students that actually ride those buses versus parent drop-off to demonstrate that we have adequate queuing space for drop-off and pickup.
Well, there is a tremendous amount of traffic already at that intersection at 4:30 to 5:30. The cars are backed up for more than two miles, so this is only going to make this problem significantly worse.
When does the middle school get out? What time?
I do not have those precise times with me right now.
Oklahoma City, 2:00 and 3:00?
Okay.
3:15.
So middle of the afternoon, non-peak traffic time for the, as far as the overall system's concerned.
What was the rationale for adopting the traffic impact fee as opposed to requiring a traffic study?
They're two different things. Requiring a traffic study is a very specific thing that people need to do to come up with solutions for points of access and how many cars are going to impact the roadway. So they're completely different things. The site-specific traffic studies that the city used to require were so that you could plan for any of those specific improvements site by site. So they're no longer required by the city, but an individual may do a traffic study for anything that they wish to assess and come up with a solution for it.
It seems to me that this is just an area that's experiencing a tremendous amount of growth, so you've got a little bit of a chicken or an egg problem. You've got a lot of houses going up, so the schools have to expand. The schools have to expand, so traffic's going up, so the roads need to get wider. We can't do all those things at once. We have to pick and make difficult choices. I understand the issue. If I'm not mistaken, the queuing lane you're giving me 1,500 feet, what is that plan? Does that account for like, not quite 70 cars or around 70 cars? What would that account for?
Well, and that was just on one lane, and that's going off the top of my head. I hadn't measured it in several months since I've had that conversation, but we calculated we could put somewhere between 100 and 150 cars in the space that we had for the elementary.
I sure wish I knew what the, you know, the city side of the improvement plan was for the area and what the expansion could look like, but I don't. And I have a hard time, again, because this is really somewhat of a chicken or an egg problem, holding the school accountable for anything beyond ensuring that the logistics within their side are going to allow for people to get in and off the arterial street as quickly as possible. I don't know that you've really given us enough information to know that, but that's my only, my only concern.
Okay. And we did provide more information whenever, like I said, with Oklahoma City Engineering, whenever we were permitting the elementary school that is under construction now, and that will be there with or without this middle school going in.
The staff report says that there's 500-plus new homes coming, plus I guess whatever's there. I mean, are these the homes that this school will pull from?
If there are children, I'm not familiar with the districts, but I would assume that if you live next to the school, you'd be in the district.
Well, it would just seem like one, one opportunity to reduce traffic would of course be to make it a walkable school, one where you could actually walk your kid-
And as part of the TEs, we did agree to provide connectivity with sidewalks to the adjoining neighborhoods. We will allow gates through, and in the plating of those subdivisions, if they'll leave spaces, we can build a connected sidewalk network.
Well, do you think the quality of those connections matter for if people will actually use them? So I hope that you guys put the right amount of effort into it. Be my conclusion.
I'm the architect for the project, Terry Madam, GH2 Architects, 7204 Northwest 158th Street. Yes, I think the, some of the questions you've asked, the elementary has already been permitted, went through this process. That's kind of already down the road. The middle school is much further off that site. You could pull in, we've got, what Alec was trying to say is we've got about 200 parking queuing zone just for the middle school. If you add in the length for the elementary for the middle school at that time, you're going to get closer to 300, 400 cars being able to park in the site, not on the road. So there have been these discussions already with the city and how the traffic impacts the site. The middle school is really so far off of that road, there's plenty of queuing for what they're going to have. They're going to have more bus traffic than they are any cars pulling in for this particular project. That's, and then to address the walkability of the site, the school is definitely open to connecting. We've already had discussions with the developer, the city, as to if there is a connection there for cars and sidewalks, if it's to be gated off. The school is more than open to those discussions and making that work because they do understand that all of these houses are getting built directly adjacent to them. And then to the point of the other schools that were pointed out earlier, if you look at those sites, those schools are very close to the road. I would say right on the road compared to where we are. These are set so much further back with the queuing, with trying to get people off of the road designed into both of these sites purposefully because the school doesn't like blocking those roads, getting the phone calls that everybody else gets as well. So if there's any other questions any of us can, can answer, be happy to do so.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Anyone else who wants to be heard on it?
I don't have anybody else signed up. Is there anybody else who wants to be heard on this topic today?
Kathy Madolee, 11913 Southwest 44th Street, Mustang. I just want to point out, he did say that the times are staggered for the schools, but they're not by very much, not enough to clear out the traffic. And also, I know we're talking about the middle school, but the grade school is going to add to it whether, because they have to come down the same road to get there, so I know the grade school's not the issue, but the grade school is part of the problem because they're going to be right there together, and you're going to have to go down 44th to get to either school. So it's going to, even though we're not talking about the grade school, it is going to be part of our problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I'm not insensitive to the discussion about the traffic, and it's frankly understandable. Again, I think we're put in a difficult position to gauge which part of infrastructure should come first, a school to allow for expansion and kids to go there, or streets to accommodate their drop-off and pickup. I'm going to err on the side of understanding that growing pains are just that, and I'm going to support the application. So unless there's additional discussion, I'm going to make a motion for approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve item number five. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Item six is S.P.U.D. 1032 to rezone 3130 North Barnes Avenue from R-1 to S.P.U.D. 1032.
Hello, Rob Lane, RJL Investments, 2113 Northwest 27th Street.
Tell us what it is you're asking for.
I want to build two tiny homes. I own the lot that is right on the corner of 31st and Barnes, and we have quite the room to put like a tiny 570-square-foot house facing 31st, and then another tiny 575-square-foot house facing Barnes. And that's what we're ultimately wanting to do. Why it was originally zoned R-4, that's a question that we really didn't know because that means multi-unit. These are not multi-units. These are single-family tiny homes and just following the trend that I see on HGTV. Looks like everybody's kind of getting into it a little bit, so we have an opportunity there, and these can obviously fit that particular lot, so that's what we're shooting for approval on.
Commissioners, I have met with and talked to Mr. Lane on-site. This is a part of sort of an ongoing effort at infill, developing freestanding, single-family units, multiple of those on single lots. I also don't know why it was identified with a base zoning district for the S.P.U.D. of R-4. I've asked staff, take a hard look at that, get it down as low as it'll go, but I also have spoken to the applicant about that and cleared that with him, and we've also discussed the fact that the S.P.U.D. itself needs to reflect the fact that these are not attached units. This is not a, a complex- This is not a complex in any way. They are single-family units, multiple single-family units on this lot. So, that's what the documents will be amended to reflect, if they don't already. And Commissioner Highsmith, you had some issue with respect to access that you had discussed with the applicant as well?
So, again, we talked on the phone and about the driveways, and my specific interest was to see that those go to single-entry driveways, where once on his property can expand to the double-wide that he wanted to serve his garages.
Yeah, so that's not a problem at all, that we change those entries into singles instead of doubles.
Okay.
What is the rationale for retaining the R4 base?
Staff's not quite sure, so they're going to look at that hard for me.
I'm an amateur. This is my first time just doing what I'm told. I have no idea, so I've never built before. We only buy and remodel homes, so I, this is, I'm an amateur.
I think it may have created a little confusion. We do have a letter of protest, and I actually have at least one person signed up to speak, too. I think it gives kind of a false impression of what it is that's going to be built there.
Jared Martin, Development Services. My understanding is it's R1 now, and the request is to have the three single-family units on the one lot.
Add two.
To add two, to an existing one that's already there on an existing lot, essentially. And those, that'll remain one lot?
Yes, sir.
I think that's the reason for the R4, is that you're going to have multiple units on the one lot. If they were going to be individual lots, you could do a modified R1, and you have to really modify that minimum lot size to allow for what they're doing.
But the SPOD can reflect, it's limited to...
That's correct, yeah.
Single unit detached and no more than three, right?
No more than two.
All of that's going to be built in.
Right, so it could be a modified R3, you know, allowing for the detached part of that, or an R4, which already allows for the detached, so.
Or, you could split the lots.
Right, if you wanted to do an R1 and modify everything, setbacks, lot sizes, maximum lot coverage, and those kinds of things, then you could have an R1, and they could have individual lots.
I guess the question is, do you ever plan on selling these individually?
No.
If you do, you'll be, you'll be a little bit of a pickle. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I guess my nervousness, and I apologize, I didn't have time to look at it in advance, but is, what are we preserving with an R4 base designation that we shouldn't clean up, given the context of the neighborhood? Are there things that we should do here?
The SPOD is specifically tailored, so I don't think so. I think we're good.
Other than the uses that are allowed? So, if you're suggesting that you strike some of these uses that allow three and four-family residential and multiple-family residential from the allowed uses?
Absolutely.
To be single-family only and the Property Owners Association? That would then further limit the uses on R4.
I'd like it better.
Absolutely.
I would like it better.
Was I not clear about that? We're going to, we're going to limit the uses permitted to the three single residential units.
But that's all that's there.
Right, yes. That's all that will be permitted.
That's agreeable? You're good with that?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So, if you'll excuse me, I do have someone signed up who wanted to speak on this matter, Angela Williford. Can you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, I'm Angela Williford at 2207 Cashin Place. I'm just around the corner, south and west. My mother and I live there on Cashin Place, and we have a nice little small community, a very nice little single-family homes, and even some of these areas, our blocks are starting to have nice little families moving in and cleaning up the properties. We do have trouble in our area, and we appreciate anybody helping us and cleaning it up, but we don't want anything to happen to our residential one. We don't have anything more than our single-family homes, and with that kind of rating, the one that got on there, it would allow for future owners to put in as many units as they like. So, I have a protest of five houseowners, homeowners protesting against changing it to anything allowing more than a single-family home.
So, what we're talking about limiting it to is two single-family homes?
Yes, and that would be much different. I still get a little concerned about the size and the driveways. You know, Barnes, Barnes is, that part of Barnes is not, has not been improved. In fact, it's a little asphalt road that you really, you don't have any curbs, no curbs, all the way down Barnes, and, you know, people, it just drops off, and it's narrow. You've got two people going down it. You have to be careful. So, and, you know, there has not been the improvements in the sewer systems and utilities like other areas. All the streets, even 30th, well, not 30th, I'm sorry, Cashin, 31st, all of them are cracked up badly. We have trouble with drainage. So, anything allowing more than single-family homes would just not be conducive to our area, and we respectfully request that you consider our option.
And I totally understand that. I think there was just a little bit of misunderstanding that was generated by the R4 base.
Right, and we want to...
This is not, you know, apartment house that's going to be constructed there, and I get your concern.
Right, and, you know, and for the future, I mean, we all want to own our homes forever, but you never know. And I know I plan on staying there. I've been there since 1992. We don't ever plan on selling our home. My mother owns it, I will own it, and we'll be staying there. And just thank you for considering our protest. Do I turn it in?
Absolutely, if you would, please.
Thank you.
Commissioners, if I could, I'd make a motion to approve.
Before we do that, I just want to make sure that we still understand that there are comments in the staff report that we really don't have clarity on, that we discussed last time, that appear here as well.
Oh, we were going to do that. I'm sorry, I'm so glad you said that.
This is the first case they've appeared. I was waiting.
I'm sorry. We talked about this earlier. I did want staff to come and clarify this issue for us.
Yes, Nathan Manuel, Utilities Department, City of Oklahoma City. We understand that those are things that we've tried to enforce through the design process and, but by putting in them in the planning commission reports, they're not explicitly codified anywhere in the subdivision regs or in our ordinances. So, we will have those comments be stricken from any of the cases where they're made. We will not make them on any further cases, and we're going to work on our design requirements where we may look at doing something like that, what we think we need to to protect our assets. But when we do that, we'll be working with the Design Engineers for Private Development. We'll get a document that everybody agrees on, put it out for the public and stakeholders to review, and then go through the formal city council approval process, so. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you very much. So, even though it appears here...
Oh, okay.
It'll be struck, is that the deal?
Legal's telling me that the cases that are implicated by this removal of comment would be six, two, three, 10, and 15, so. Thank you. Thank you, Nathan.
If there's no further discussion, I'll recommend approval of the application.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number six. Would you cast your votes, please?
Thank you all very much.
It is approved.
Item seven is SPOD 1033 to rezone 10709 North Rockwell Avenue from SPOD 761 to SPOD 1033.
Is the applicant present? Oh, this one as well, with respect to the comments we were just discussing, I'm sorry. You don't care about that. Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, James Herbie. I'm at 4540 Southeast 81st Street.
And what is it you're needing from us today?
I represent the owner. Basically, this was a spud that was already approved. The owner had gotten approval for this to be a possible restaurant location on the previous spud, and so this one would just amend it so that a mattress store that was indicated interest could be the tenant. It's completely surrounded by commercial places there, so.
There are offices to the north and south, is that correct?
Yes, and then retail across the street.
Okay.
Pharmacy, dentist, medical office, auto parts.
Okay. Commissioners?
Anybody who wants to be heard on it?
I don't have anybody signed up. Is there anybody else here who wishes to be heard on this matter today? Do you have any questions for the applicants?
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number seven. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you very much.
Item eight is PUD 1671 to rezone 12431 Northwest 4th Street from PUD 1086 to PUD 1671.
Good afternoon, Mark Grubbs, 1819 South Morgan Road, on behalf of the applicant. What you have before you today is just a PUD to expand the zoning that we have to the east to allow for professional offices and retail. Mr. Cravens, I agree to the TEs. Ms. Cravens had called me earlier today and asked that three of the uses be stricken. Let me get to those. Those are items J, K, and M, which is greenhouse, hoop house, and lodging accommodations, commercial lodging. We agree to strike those from there. I've also reviewed the protest letter that was submitted that asked that no access be taken to, I can't read the road name, to the south in the residential there. We would agree to only retain the rights to have that for emergency access if needed, if the fire marshal requested that at a later state, but we do not intend to access that through, for regular traffic, so. Again, we agree to the TEs, and ask for your approval. Be happy to answer your questions.
And I have to admit, when I looked at this, it just seems like an odd bit to me, the location of things like fast-food restaurants with drive-through windows.
I talked to him about that earlier today, thought that might come up, and he agrees that he's fine with striking that as well.
Good.
I told him that that would probably never go back there, so he was fine with that.
In terms of using that only as an exit, will that be, there be a gate there?
There would be. If we extended any hard surface to that per the fire marshal's request, then we would put up a barricade or a gate of some sort to only allow for emergency access.
And in terms of the barrier, the fence, what is the construction of that fence?
We're not that far along. This does have to come back before specific plan, we've agreed to that, but I did agree to the TE which would require either a wall or a stockade fence with brick columns, yeah. So, I agree to that TE.
I do have, we have in our packet, a letter of protest, is the, I can't quite read this, I'm sorry, is it Janice, or is it Janice? I should know. Duncan? No. Is there anybody else here today who wishes to be heard on this matter?
You said you addressed the protest letter with the person.
I have not addressed the protest letter with the person. I just said that I would agree not to take access, and then the landscaping code will be met, which will require the landscape buffer. So, those were the two issues in that, so I'm essentially addressing it with you.
The, yeah, the protest letter really reflected the concern about ingress and egress from Ridge Gate was the issue there, so they're going to address that.
And I guess one of the, again, I must confess, I'm a little confused. This is actually an extension of an existing PUD. We don't have that PUD in front of us, so I don't know what it provides for, or, you know, how this would work.
It was identical to this before I just struck those uses.
Okay. Do I correctly understand that you are reserving the right to go up to five stories, and that the buffer you're proposing there is like 50 feet of open space?
The buffer is 50 feet, that's correct.
And, but, as part of this process, you're waiving what would normally be that step-down for separation from residential.
We're waiving the lodging accommodations, which would typically be your, any multi-story structure. Is that what your, is that what your question was?
Well, so, are you saying that you're willing to limit your height further than that?
I, yeah, I think that we would be. I don't know what that height is today, though.
I, I mean, I just, I have a little bit of unease about the idea of, you know, five stories, 50 feet away from residential, you know, and I think I would want to see maybe compliance with the city's requirements on that. Is that too much to commit to right now?
No, I think, I think that we could do, we could agree to that.
Okay, so the language in...
We would, we would just meet city code on height restrictions.
Okay. Have I already asked if there's anybody else here who wants to be heard? Commissioners?
Where, excuse me, where is the access going to be? Is it on the north side or on the west?
Access is actually coming from check hall.
Where that least road is now.
Say it again.
There's a least road there now. I guess, okay. Yeah, I guess.
Got it.
If there's no further discussion, I'd make a motion to approve the application as amended.
Well, I second it, with the understanding that I live in that area, and going to monitor that egress point. I would like to see you put a gate there, at least a temporary gate, not just a barricade. So, with that in understanding, can I second the motion?
Can I, can I just say, if we attach to that, that I would agree to that? I mean, paving may not even go up to it. At that point, you wouldn't be any need for a gate there, so.
Okay. Second. I have a motion and a second to approve item number eight as amended. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item nine is SPOD 1034 to rezone 11521 Southwestern Avenue from PUD 498 to SPOD 1034.
Is the applicant present?
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Steve Buchanan. My address is 11801 Southwestern. I'm a broker and real estate developer in the South Oklahoma City area, and I'm representing the owner today on her behalf. The current spud that's in place now is 498. It was originally designed for Brahms many years ago. Unfortunately, in the spud, it limits the amount of square footage to their building site that they had at that time, it's 5760 square feet. For acre property, you could put a lot more square footage on that. What we're asking today is, is to go from the 5760 square feet up to the 9,800 square feet to do a retail strip center is what it would be, and it's an upscale-looking area. Talked to the city several times about it, and I also talked to Mr. Rankin a little bit about it as well. All the uses that were in place before, pretty much the uses that are here today, we used, Mr. Chambliss helped us kind of put together a PUD that he thought best represented it and kind of brought it up today.
Do we have any questions of the applicant?
The only question I have on this one is it, in the staff report references, it says you've tried to align it as well as possible, it looks like, from the site plan, that you've taken your drive to your northern... It looks like from the site plan that you've taken your drive to your northern boundary, and you can't take it anymore. Is that correct?
We tried to go the 200 feet to the north of the Sonic to not have driveways right together.
That's what, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure.
Is there anybody else here today who wishes to be heard on this matter? Commissioners?
Move approval.
I do have one question. You're in a environmentally sensitive area of highly vulnerable aquifer. So typically in these areas, like, I'm happy to approve you to build out the additional square footage. It's just a lot of hardscape on that amount of land. It'd be nice to see some permeable paving, or some amount of sodded area, or something where we can, you know, make sure that we're capturing the water. The city has a lot of water issues, especially with flooding, so anytime that we can, you know, use our best judgment on each piece of property, it's good to do.
Sure. And I did get with Mr. Liggins as far as on the tension, to make sure all the tension was set up for it, and I do believe there'd be some grass on the western side of it. The back area would be the parking. I believe there'd be some grass on the western side of it as well. We did look into that before we went forward.
It's not a requirement to approach these with permeable paving, but I would like to strongly suggest that you guys at least do a little bit of research. The city has recently set up new standards for permeable paving, so it's fairly easy to understand what that entails, and the costs are typically not, not a thing. We've done it before in projects and-
Well, the flow, flow on this property does go to the west, and where this grass area would be is to the west area, so that would be kind of a catch before it even goes any farther than that.
I will second Mr. Rankin's motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number nine. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 10 is C 6892, the final plat of Taylor Manor 2, located north of Northwest 23rd Street and east of North MacArthur Boulevard.
Good afternoon. Jason Spencer with Craft and Toll here on behalf of the applicant. So, before you today, it's the final plat for Taylor Manor 2. It's north of 23rd Street, east of MacArthur. We've got 22 single-family lots on approximately seven acres. It's intended to be a gated community, so it'll be private streets with public utilities. I did meet with several of the neighbors at the site yesterday to discuss some of their concerns, they'd submitted letters about on the drainage. We talked through our drainage plans for the site, which do include some storm sewer in the channel, and also providing stormwater detention. As we discussed through that, I believe we put some of their concerns to rest, and as I said, stormwater detention will be provided, and we'll agree to meet with all the city's engineering requirements in regards to drainage. This plat does meet the R1 zoning requirements and conforms to the subdivision regs in preliminary plat. I believe a few of the neighbors are here to speak on the application. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Thank you. I do have a couple of people signed up to speak. Dave Richardson and Martin Johnson. Whichever of you wishes to speak first is fine with me, if you-
I'm Martin Johnson.
Okay.
My name is Dave Richardson, 2524 North Molten Drive, across the street from the proposed development. I'd first like to say-
I'm sorry, across which street?
I am east of, I'm on the east side of Molten.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, of all the things that could happen to this vacant land, single-family residential is the best option we could hope for, and we're thankful to the developer for investing some money in our neighborhood. However, drainage is the main consideration. I did, and others, meet with Jason yesterday, and he did address and answer a lot of the concerns we had. After he left, I looked at the plan that he left with us, and not all of my concerns were addressed yesterday. I'll just put it, to make it quick. I spoke to engineering this morning. The drainage plan is third in the queue. I understand the planning commission, you're not engineers, you don't do a drainage review. You're concerned with the use and design of the, of the development. However, I would ask that you consider a postponement until the drainage review is done, because I think it's very likely that the common area that is dedicated for the detention pond may actually grow. Now, if that happens, I don't know what that involves as far as your panel is concerned. If you give final approval, can you do a minor adjustment later to the plat? Or does it need to be resubmitted? I don't know that. But, and I understand the developer has been at this now for about a year, and time is money. The more delay that he has, the more cost he incurs. I get that. But the drainage issue is so impactful, I just, you'd have to be on-site to understand that, okay? But, again, I don't think a delay, a postponement, a final approval would be such a hardship that it's not feasible to do. Thank you.
Have you made that request of the applicant?
No, I haven't. Again, yesterday, on-site, we met with Jason. He's very professional. He showed us exactly what they were doing. He addressed our concerns. After he left, I looked at the plan that he left, and it appears to me that the flow line of this detention pond, in other words, the outflow, is above the finished floor of my garage. I'm not really scared about waking up some morning and put my feet on wet carpet, but I don't want my garage flooded. I don't think anyone here would. It never has been before. So what happens if it starts flooding? Well, it's awful hard to fix things after the fact. It just is, in my experience.
Thank you.
So, again, I don't think a postponement, a short, I think maybe 30 days, we give engineering time to review, come back with comments, let them respond, let us know what's going on. Thank you.
Commissioners, do we have any questions of our protestors?
No, but thank you for your service.
Do you want to speak to his request?
Yeah, and I do appreciate the neighbors taking time out to meet with me yesterday, and we did do the engineering design on the pond. Obviously, it's got to be reviewed by the city and approved, but we're not okay with taking a continuance on the, on the final plat. Obviously, the plans have to be approved. We have to install that before we can file the plat of record or bond the improvements on it, and we agree to working with the engineering department and drainage department in particular, and making sure we get those plans approved.
What, what would happen in the case that he hypothesized, if, if for some reason your detention needed to be larger, I mean, if it, if it affected the actual layout of the plat, what would be the, the effect of that?
So, if you can see on the southeast corner, that large area, that's the common area that has the detention pond in it. If we did have to enlarge that, we would likely lose the lot to the west of that, so you would lose one lot and expand the detention pond in that direction. So, and, and in regards to elevation of the detention pond, we've got to match in basically at the existing ground at the east side of our site. There's no way, there's nothing underground to take the water to, and so we are uphill of, of the neighbors there, and that's where, so our outlet is, in a sense, higher than, than his house. However, our pond and outlet are designed to provide detention, and that will be reviewed by the engineering department.
And I, I will tell, do any of you have any questions to the applicant about this point?
I, I just have one. So, you've obviously studied, I mean, you've studied the site for, according to our case history, quite a while. Is this going to make the problem better or worse? They clearly have an issue out here that has nothing to do with your development. Is your development going to make it better or worse?
So, and just to be clear, there was another engineer involved in this, so we've been brought on in the last, I think it was around November, December's when we started on, but we have looked at this in detail, done a study of the area. So, with the detention that we're providing, we should, we will not increase the problems that they've got. Now, we're not going to be able to fix all of the existing drainage problems that are out there. However, we are going a little bit above and beyond what Oklahoma City requires for stormwater detention. They require stormwater detention for a 100-year storm. We're going to go ahead and provide that for all the storm events, so they should see some small improvements based on that. But basically, the detention is designed, will be reviewed by the city to make sure that we don't, the additional hard surface and impervious area don't increase any flow off of our site onto the property. But we're about seven acres out of about 25 that drains through there.
One of the protestors commented that the outflow for your detention pond is above the finished floor of his garage.
So, basically, we've got to tie in at the southeast corner and drain out onto Molten Drive. That's where the water goes now, and that's where it has to continue to go. There's no underground storm sewer in that area for us to take anything underground, so we're tying into that existing elevation.
Okay.
I, I will tell you that before the meeting today, I asked staff, very specifically, the question of whether we needed to continue this item, whether they felt we need to continue this item, in order for them to further review the plans that they have prior to us taking action. They assured me that they were okay with us voting on this today, that they have, you know, a handle on sort of where it is. In any event, they have to meet the requirement. They cannot make the problem worse. That's part of the process, so.
May I respond?
Sure.
First of all, I didn't hear your comment.
I'm sorry.
I talked to staff.
I asked them the question of whether they felt that we needed to continue this item until they could further review the plat.
That was engineering staff?
Yes.
Okay. Jason is correct that they have made an attempt, of course, that'll be determined by engineers, whether it's a good attempt or not. My, my point is, is it is possible, possible, that their plan, their design, be rejected. And in that case, they're either going to require that they do put in pipe, or pay for that improvement, or that they're going to make that detention area larger. Those are possibilities. I'm not an engineer. I can't speak with certainty about what's going to happen. All I'm saying is that it's third in the queue. They submitted it about a month ago, I believe, and I called this morning at 11:00 a.m. I was hoping it would be reviewed by now, is why. But I do not think, I do really not believe it's a hardship on the applicant to ask for a two-week or four-week, whatever your schedule is, postponement. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just not sure that if we postpone it, it's material to the decision either way to us. I understand his concerns, but it's got to go through engineering to get built regardless. And so the approval here today, I just, like, I don't, I, I support the item based on the discussion here today, and I don't believe that that is necessarily an issue, at least for my review.
Can I ask a single question? What if it comes back?
Sir, please come to the microphone.
What if it comes back and there is a procedure, I mean, what if there is a significant change required? Do they just make the changes on the plat and it's done? Does that have to come back through planning commission, back to council?
I'll let staff answer that question for you.
So, if the, if it, if it comes back that the detention pond has to be enlarged, and that's going to remove, in this case, well, in any case, more than 10% of the lots, so in this case, two lots, then they would have to come back before this board and have the new design looked at. But if it's only going to remove one or two lots, that could be done administratively.
And so, just looking at the drawing, two lots would be at least half again as much area as they're talking about now, so the likelihood of that seems to me, in my non-engineering brain, to be relatively small.
And I don't think it would affect my decision, even if they had to come back, is my point. It would be, it would be even for the better for you, so that's where I stand.
Does that motion?
Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
I do have one comment.
I was going to ask, yes, Commissioner Coffey, she comments.
This is in my ward, and I did drive the area and walk the area, some of which is pictured here last weekend. It is obvious that there has been a water problem there for a long, long time. I have looked at those things that are proposed, including the concrete drainage ditches, the detention pond, and I do recognize this also is going to be governed to some extent by the Corps of Engineers. I think that having been said, I would move for approval of this, or second, if someone else already made that.
I have a motion and a second for approval. Do you have any other comments? No, would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 11 is PC 10522 to rezone 2645 Southwest 25th Street from R1 to O1.
Maria de Jesus Diaz.
Would you, would you pull that down for me, please?
Right here?
That's better.
Okay. Maria de Jesus Diaz, on behalf of Arturo Diaz.
Would you give us your address, please?
Sure. 2641 Northwest 35th Street in Oklahoma City.
Thank you. Tell us what you're asking us for here today.
We bought a, this property on Southwest 25th, 2645. It is a house, and we're asking if we can make it on, as some business offices. We had a, we, we had bought a house before, and the purpose to rent it, and we had bad luck, so we're looking at the business side.
You don't have a specific use in mind for it?
Offices, just plain offices. And, there is, yes.
Would this be a reuse of the, of the residence as office?
Uh-huh. Yes, sir. We have houses to, to the south in front. We have a business, and then there's the, there's a big lot from Fox Industrial, and then we have the Oklahoma, what is it? The Oklahoma auction in front of us, so I think it's, we're kind of like a business offices type.
Commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant? I, I frankly am not supportive of this application. I'm not crazy about the prospect of starting a kind of domino effect down what's clearly a residential street in residential area that would just result in another Northwest 23rd Street. I just, I, I'm not supportive of that pattern, and so I'm not able to support the application.
I, I struggle-
Yes.
Just, one second, I want to respond to that a little bit. I, I struggle with what's new on, on streets like, you said, Northwest 23rd. Just because at one point they were residential doesn't mean that they can continue to be residential past a certain change to the pattern of the street. And it's hard to tell landowners that, you know, well, it's too bad your, your lot's no longer useful. And so, in the case of like 23rd, and I, I'd love to hear maybe a little bit of planning on, on how they see the future of these types of corridors going, but at a certain traffic load, the, these older neighborhood, but like almost arterial streets, don't really have a future as residential. And so, I'm, I'm unsure how to approach it, frankly. I'm not saying that's my, you know, I'm not in any way saying I'm ready to, to vote, but-
Yeah, because in front of the property, there's a, a salon, a hair salon. It's a house, but it's, it's a, it's a business, so that was, well, we were thinking about offices, too.
Do you, do you live in the area now?
Uh, right now, the house is empty. We're cleaning it.
Are you thinking about this for your individual use?
Renting.
Renting it?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm kind of with, I'm kind of with Commissioner Highsmith on this. I mean, we've got a, a, a pretty large I-2 site across the street with a, looks like an abandoned rail spur from the photograph. I didn't have a chance to drive this, but, and then you've got the auto auction to the southwest corner of this. I, I think it's fair to say that the idea that we're going to see redevelopment here residentially is pretty unlikely. And so, it's- And so if somebody can make a use out of this property that's different, make it economic, I mean, it's not a, it's not an I-2 application, it's not a, you know, I mean, they're not trying to get commercial, it's an O-1, it's an extremely limited office district. Hard for me not to try to, to support some sort of economic development here.
And the property is currently abandoned? Somebody lives there?
Yes. Completely destroyed when we bought it.
Is there anybody else present here that wants to be heard on this matter? No commissioners?
Aubrey, is there any color that you could provide on like, kind of how to approach this type of property?
From, from the staff report's analysis of this, the O-1 use is a use that we consider to be able to be compatible on the edges of residential transitioning to higher intensity uses. So this situation brought forth kind of that same combination of existing conditions. The zoning ordinance also has provisions in it that have rules when you're doing an adaptation of a single-family use to an office use, so that you can look at traffic impacts and impacts to the adjacent residential units. There are some protections in the basic zoning code for those types of adaptive uses. So what we looked at are the same observations that you both made, is if this pattern continued up along the street, would an O-1 low-intensity office use with residential conversions be compatible between a solid R1 neighborhood and a higher-intensity industrial district? And I think we have seen it go wrong on some commercial corridors where those, the intensity of office development and the conversions of residential have created some traffic issues. For this site and this specific use, it felt like an appropriate type of transition, which is why we recommended approval of it.
Well, without any protests, I'm going to move for approval of the item.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Item number 11, would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 12 is SP 500. This is a special permit in the R1 Single Family District located at 11340 Surrey Hills Boulevard.
The applicant present?
Hello, yes, back again. Michael Love, 16200 Sonoma Park Drive with Surrey Hills Golf Club. We were here a couple of weeks ago, and we're told to meet with the homeowners. We were, we did not meet with the homeowners, they met on their own. And I did talk to their lawyer, and they would like, I think our biggest argument was, they would like the eighth hole to be a par three instead of the par four that we, that we have it now. So we would like to keep it a par four. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but we'd like your approval on our special permit.
How long has this been designated as future expansion for the golf course?
This was back in 2005, when we did the plat for the Fairways Neighborhood.
And how many residential structures were built along the golf course at that time?
Well, the existing 18 or the new nine that you're?
The new nine.
The new nine, we had about 20, I guess.
Twenty homes at that point? How many of those homes were along hole number eight?
Zero.
When were those homes built?
2000 to 2005.
Okay.
That was the first, first phase of Fairways.
Thank you.
Any other questions, the applicant? I do have several people signed up to speak on this matter. I don't know whether you have a particular order in mind, or?
Probably best if the attorney spoke first. Seth Von Tunglin, 6414 North Santa Fe Avenue, Suite A.
When last we were all here together, the commission had rather strenuously suggested that the applicant meet with the protestants.
Yes.
They indicated they were not able to meet.
It was clear from after the meeting last time that any meeting that was held with, I forget Claude's last name, would probably not be fortuitous, as it was met with high disregard as far as us having any protest against the golf course at all. There was a meeting held between the homeowners that are on that side of hole eight that will be impacted. The city and the developer were given a list of those homeowners last time, and those are the homeowners that have also signed up to speak and protest, should there be any questions or I misstate anything as we go along. The question was how many homes were built on home eight or hole number eight in 2005, whenever it was designated to be a golf course. According to what the homeowners say, the first home went in somewhere around 2008. So there were no homes in 2005 at that point in time. Each one of these homes that were sold to the residents were sold with, yes, there's going to be future golf course here, with the exception of, I believe, one resident who it was relayed to him that, no, there probably won't be a golf course. But getting to what the actual dispute in this matter is, on those handouts that I gave, that were just passed out, if we take them in order, the first one kind of encapsulates what the issues are. There's two issues. Safety, as there are two tee boxes that hit across the road on hole number eight and hole number two. And then the other one is that the width of the fairway is not large enough to support a par four. The width of the fairway is large enough to support a par three. I understand from discussing with the developer that, well, they don't want to have two par threes back to back. There is an option on hole seven that they could claim one of those lots that are intended to be a home, that there is no home, scoot those tee boxes back, have a par four there, convert this to a par three.
And before you, before you launch into this, I, I'm not a golf course designer. I appreciate the materials that you've brought us today, but I'm, you know, not really prepared to sit here and absorb them while we're trying to discuss and decide this matter here today. It might have been a good idea for you to provide them in advance of the meeting. I'm, I'm not going to redesign this golf course for these people.
Well, and so the, the problem with these is that how it's laid out now, it's going to create a public and a private nuisance. The public nuisance is going to come from the vehicles that enter on the main thoroughfare on 112th Street, which is the main entrance to the home. If you look at, at the Google Earth printout, you can see where it, the main entrance is off of Mustang Road, and it goes on to Northwest 12th. Tee box number one for hole eight hits directly across that hole. While I was out there yesterday briefly with a drone taking photos, there were three cars that drove by. This is a main road. The other, the other hole that hits across on hole one, it's going to be less heavily tra, less heavily trafficked, but this one's a main entrance it comes in. In their design that they have on their board, it doesn't show that any of these tee boxes are supposed to be across the road. And I don't know necessarily if the city has approved any recreational golf walls to be hit across a public road.
This is, sorry, I haven't played materials. Is it public or private course?
I'm sorry, what?
Is it a private course or a public?
It's a, it's a public course. Anybody can play on it.
Yeah, semi-private. We have members, but public's welcome, too.
From what I understand, you can pay $100 a month and golf all that you want if you live in the neighborhood. It's also one that I've golfed on through a Golf Now app, so you can get on the golf course for $10 or $12 and golf the 18. I don't know what the nine hole would be like, but it's a public course. And according to the golf, and I understood that not everybody golfs. And so there are two articles in the back, but the main points are encapsulated on the bottom of this first page where it talks about it. As far as fairway widths, they're generally 30 to, to 40 yards with a scratch golfer. Scratch golfer is somebody that can go out, they don't need any extra strokes to make what you're supposed to hit. They can go out and hit par, where they don't get any strokes over. A scratch golfer needs a fairway that is 32 yards wide in order to land on that fairway 66% of the time. Somebody that needs 20 extra strokes, somebody that's me, that needs 20 extra strokes, they need a 40-yard fairway. This is a par four that they've designed. Initially, it was a par three. The residents will tell you, and that's what this picture here is, that in 2006, approximately October or somewhere in there, somebody came out and they spray painted where these tee boxes were supposed to be, they put markers. At that point in time, it appeared that it was going to be a par three. Would have been no opposition from the homeowners. Since that time, they have, the developer, if you look on the Google Earth picture, you can see the, the body of water that is in the middle, where there's a fairway that runs on either side, and hole eight runs on the east side of that.
Real quick, if I can, I don't mean, sorry. Mr. Love, can you comment? There has been, there'd been some dispute in the last two times we've heard this thing about whether or not there was actually a tee box across the street. So there is, there are actually tee boxes across the street?
Yes, we have two spots, hole number two and hole number eight that these folks live on.
Is, is it the protees? Or is it all the, the whole tee boxes behind?
No, 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 just, just the protees. We have a pro tee, a men's tee, and a women's tee. The pro tee is on the other side of the road, very similar to what Oak Tree has.
Got it, thank you.
The difference between this and Oak Tree is Oak Tree is a PGA-regulated golf course, and this is a community golf course. But if you look at picture number five on the items that are stapled together, you can see where this lake that's in the middle has been filled in somewhat. I don't, I don't believe that you probably got permission from any watering, water board to change the layout of this lake or this pond, however it's classified. But since that's happened, it has rained where the, the land that they've tried to reclaim to make this fairway wider, there's dead grass on it from being flooded all the time. The water now floods more easily higher up into the yards because that, approximately two feet that were on the border of that is gone now. It floods down, this new cart path that they have built, it's already cracking and being washed out because of the floodwaters that go across that, all because they're trying to make it from a par three to a par four. The fairway widths on this, and if you recall, an average, somebody that's a 20, or a 20 handicap needs a 40-yard fairway in order to land their ball 66% of the time. On that first page, if you look at the fairway widths, I went out and I measured these. I used a rolling measure, I walked every bit of it. These pictures that I have associated in this packet correlate with the Google Earth. And on these points that are on there, it tells you how wide it is and how far it is from the men's tee box, tee box number two, not the one that's across the road, but the tee box number two.
Please, again, if other members of the commission wish to hear this discussion, I'll certainly sit through it. But I assume that if it doesn't work as a par four hole, they'll change it to a par three hole. I just, I, I'm not sufficiently educated, nor do I care to be, to sit up here and try to design this golf course up. What you're saying may make perfect sense, but it has no bearing on what I think we're here to do today, so.
I, I agree completely. I do want to be fair to the folks that live there and let them be heard on the matter, but Commissioner Powers' points couldn't, couldn't be better in that if this is something that you wanted us to review in the representation of your client, you should have presented these materials and gotten them included in our packets. Because now for us to sit up here and review this, after this thing's been continued two previous times because we didn't have information, and we encouraged you to meet, which you didn't do, and if Mr. Love would have done that as a developer and come in here and done the exact same thing, he would have been run out of here for refusing to do that. And yet you were encouraged, not encouraged, you were told, come back here having met and talked about it, and you guys didn't do that. So it's really hard to look at that and want to listen to it. It should have been presented to them in a chance where they could have taken it in and responded to it before you came back into this chamber.
And I would stress again, Mr. Cravens, that the meeting that was had immediately after the last meeting, I apologize, Claude, I don't know your last name, but it was clear at that point in time that there was, there were going to be no negotiations from you whatsoever. I took his ideas, I met with all the homeowners to discuss the, what he had proposed, putting some trees in to further narrow this 20-yard, 20-yard wide fairway.
Yeah, but, and that's all fine, but if, if that would have happened, and that would have been his response when he came back in, we could have had some fun questions for him, too, but we don't because the meeting didn't take place. So I'm just saying, it's, in here often what happens is the developer, the applicant is the one refusing to meet. In this case, you didn't encourage your clients, or client or clients, to do that, and I think it's cost them a little bit here, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, and every one of these clients that are here have had personal dealings with Claude before.
I understand.
I am in agreement with both Commissioner Powers and Cravens as well. I, I don't play golf, and to me, the golf course had been proposed long before the homes or as part of the home development. And at this point, this type of argument seems like, seems like litigation, it seems like it needs to be in front of someone else beyond the scope of what this commission does. So.
And I do have people who are signed up to be heard on this matter. If you have something that you think you want to contribute to this discussion, I'll certainly hear it. Tom Heffron?
Mr. Heffron, 11409 Fairways Avenue. You know, the issue today really isn't about a golf course design, it's about safety. The way they've designed the golf course, they did it in such a way that it will absolutely cause significant damage to the homes. The developer has stated he has a $600,000 development, and there are $2 million worth of homes that are going to be routinely harmed, okay? There's a problem here with this design where these folks will never be able to go in their backyard or share with their family or grandkids because they will be in harm's way, okay? The design that they have put out there is such that if it were a commercial business or enterprise, your safety director would ban your employees from being there, right? So it would require that we wear a football helmet or a vest or some kind of thing to protect ourselves. Out of every 100 golf balls that come off that tee box, 45 of them are going to land in this property, okay? So this isn't a customary and usual situation where you have a casual, occasional golf ball land there. This is an extreme and highly unusual situation, all right? It is not the neighbor's fault that they're dealing with a developer that has no interest in negotiating with us. It is not the attorney's fault that he hadn't reached out to them and said, hey, let's have a discussion, okay? It is the developer says, I don't want to talk to you all, I don't want to have anything to do with that. I want to wear you down, hopefully we can get a permit. The idea here is to deny them their permit, not their development. The idea here is to give them an incentive, a motivation to sit down and find a reasonable solution here. The idea here is to deny them the opportunity to put a tee box that absolutely will hurt people, damage properties. This is a neighborhood where people walk, where they ride their bikes, where children play, and they will now absolutely be in harm's way. So I ask this board to give consideration to these safety issues, deny them their permit, and give them the motivation to go back and have a serious dialogue so we can find a reasonable solution to this. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you. Is it Wayne St. Germain?
Wayne St. Germain, 11417 Fairways Avenue. I agree with Tom, it's, it's a safety issue, but I've dealt with Claude before on different issues, and I find him to be a reasonable man. I've dealt with him honestly and straight up, and I think, I think we can deal with him. Perhaps we did not make the proper approach in this case, but given the opportunity to meet with him and try to come to a good decision, a good, between the landowners and him, I think we would appreciate y'all giving us that opportunity. I travel quite a bit, so was unable to make that last meeting. I work for federal government, and y'all work for the government, I'm sure you understand, sometimes you have to be away. If you could just give us that window of opportunity, we would appreciate that ability to get with them on us and Claude and Mr. Love. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Miriam Perez.
Carol Harmon, 11429 Fairways Avenue. And I've been there since 2008 when the house was built. This is totally a safety issue. I also lived at 11900 Royal Coach Drive, which is hole number 17. We had a swimming pool in the backyard. Not only did we lose every window in the back of our house every year, that house is now empty and has been for years because it is a safety hazard. We, anytime we did anything in our backyard, if I was home alone, I had to wear a hard hat, and this is not a joke, folks, if it is not done properly, you are in danger. And I didn't think it would happen again on this same golf course. I love Surrey Hills, but I hate this golf course.
Daniel Mahon, 11433 Fairways Avenue. The distance behind my house to the golf course at the narrowest point is 82 foot, to the widest point is 101 feet. That's about the size of a city lot. Imagine if they just took a house out next door to you and said, we're going to turn it into a fairway. It would be so easy to change this to a par three, where they use lofty clubs instead of drivers, and help the safety issue. I would not have bought there, when I bought the house, it had been proposed for years, and we wouldn't have built that house on that lot knowing, in that small of an area, they're going to put a golf course where they're using drivers behind my house. That's all I got to say, it's just an unsafe situation.
Is it St. Germain?
Yeah.
Chris, is it Hoppus?
Hoppus.
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 Okay. My fingers are sticky today. Barbara, do you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Barbara Hoppus, 11413 Fairways Avenue. And for us, Claude, this is a safety issue. We're at the leanest portion of this fairway. We have nine grandchildren, six under the age of seven. And we did build a year and a half ago, knowing there would be a golf course, yes, but where it was marked further up for a par three did not put us in a safety issue. Where we are now, it is a safety issue. Moving it back to the other side of the street and moving the tee boxes back towards the road puts it directly in line of my backyard. And I don't think it's too much of a respectful request that it be moved back to a par three. Thank you.
If I may, just for a moment. Because it's hard to visualize what the paper actually says. This room is a foot and a half shorter, stepping it out, than what the average width of this fairway is. A par four that you're going to get up with a driver and hit it as hard as you can, trying to get that ball to go straight, majority of which are not going to go straight. If we were all professional golfers, this course, this hole would qualify to be on the Masters because it's so narrow. It wouldn't qualify to be on the regular pro circuit because it would be too narrow. This, this course is more narrow than what they use in the Sony Open, and a course in Hawaii, for example, and these are pros. This is a community golf course, one that they are making a danger and a hazard to the residents that have bought the house. So I would ask the board to deny their application based off of their current layout of that hole, and what was represented to the homeowners at the time that they bought.
I've got a couple of quick questions for the applicant, if, if there are no more, are there other people signed up to speak?
There are no other people signed up to speak. Is there anybody else present who wishes to be heard?
Okay. Par four, par three, how come?
What?
Par four, par three, what, what's the rationale for the par four? Help us understand that.
Well, a couple of things. I mean, it, it's, it's a good par four, we have a, we have a par three right before it, and we can't change the hole right before it because we're locked in between 112th Street and 109th Street. So we don't have room to go back to make it, you know, a legitimate par four. So we would like to keep number eight a par four, you know, instead of having two par threes and three par threes on the hole nine where we can have a, a good championship golf course.
What, what mitigation measures, if any, have you guys considered, absent not having direct information from the homeowners, to try to minimize the effect of this, this narrow area? Are there things you guys can do from your vantage point that are reasonable?
I mean, I think a couple of things. We did widen the fairway, number one, so they did speak to that a little bit, where we brought in dirt and made the, made the fairway wider, number one. You know, if, if, if they want us to eliminate that pro tee box back behind the road, I mean, it, it's a short hole already as a par four, and, you know, quite frankly, there aren't probably going to be that many drivers hit off this hole. You know, you lay up and then you go hit over, over the water, so that's kind of how the hole is supposed to be played, so.
My main issue is that tee box on the other side of the road. My dad lives on a golf course, I mean, you're going to get hit by balls in your yard, you can't stop that, all of them. But the ones going across the road, I mean, are you guys doing anything like setting up trees there? The trees, like you said, most of them aren't going to hit.
Right, there won't be very many golfers there. We, we do have some trees on number eight, they're already there along the street, and we can eliminate that tee box if that's something you all want, but there won't be very many golfers back there, very, very few people go back there and play.
Seems to me to be a reasonable compromise here.
Yeah.
Okay, sure, I mean, we can, we can eliminate that tee box across the road.
I'd feel better about it.
Okay. We have two of them. Number eight is the hole that they're on. We also have another one on number two, so.
Is that?
I don't, I don't think anybody's protesting that one, I think everybody here lives on number eight, so.
Is there traffic on the road at all?
It's not the main entry, not one of the main entries into the neighborhood, it's a, it's a side street, but, yeah, there's definitely traffic, there's probably 75 people that would live on that side that would go by there.
I'd have the same concern then.
Claude Syper, Steel. This, this, this play has been on, in the golf course entry for the last five years before the houses were built out there. We've, we've, we've used it where they have open house, where they, where they call them sellers' open, have a house and the, and the realtors help invite people in for snacks. We've, we've set it up on those occasions. We've never called that a par three, no one's ever said it was a par three. It's a par four, and it's a tough hole. Let me tell you, we have tried to build, you know, we've got 18 holes out there that I can play, and they're easy to play. We tried to build a better golf nine here for other members and whoever wants to, but it's, it's not really a very forgiving hole. Number eight is designed to hit 300 yards over water. Or if you're a sharp knocker, move up to a 200 yard. And there's, there's, I played a golf course in Idaho where they had a, a hole out in the lake, and you hit up here, and they could move the hole out to 200 yards or back to 70 or 50. And there's a lot of good holes on good golf courses, and we tried to do that on this. We've got some pretty tough spots. And I, I hate, some of these people are my friends, and one guy, the dealings we had with him, is his neighbor called and said, he's put a shack up by his house, and it looks terrible. And we went out, visited with both of them, and they, every time any of these people call the golf course or me, we go up and talk to them. We tried to meet with the people. The gentleman that's representing them never gave us that opportunity.
We understand that, we get that.
Okay. But anyway, I'll, I'll hush, but I wanted you to know that that, the shot, number eight, back there by the road, that a pro will hit, or a young guy like Mike, and I brought the pro down there, but you may not want to get him up here, he might be too long-winded. But anyway, you, you can hit the ball on the green if you can hit it 300 yards. You can move up to the men's, the old men's spot, or the ladies' tee box, and you can hit it over 180 yards. So that's a tough hole, but we widened the, and, and it's 60 yards from the right boundary to the edge of the water, at the landing spot. Mark Fuller measured it, and he's got the measurements there. So that's a pretty big landing if you don't want to go for the hole and you want to hit a whole 150-yard shot, and then another 100 or 40. So there is a way that you can go around the lake, but the, for, for tournaments and good players, that's going to be a good hole, it's going to be a fun golf course. And we have, I got to tell you one other thing, anybody that buys a lot out there, we, we and the builders will give them a six months free golf. We've had that for a year. A lot of the builders don't want to do it because it'd cost them, you know, a fourth of a year. So we do everything we can because the reason we have the golf course in there is to sell houses, and to, and to accommodate the neighborhood. So it kind of bothers me when, when they're getting mad at me, and I know the attorney don't like me, but most attorneys don't like me, so, but anyway, thank you all for your help. Do you need, do you need Mark to explain anything about?
I don't think so.
No.
What?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name's Michelle Heffron, and I live at 11409 Fairways Avenue, and I think there's just a little, a little bit of confusion here. The reason why this is all kind of last minute is because, and no disrespect, Claude, at all.
Would you direct your comments to us, please?
I'm just saying, I, no disrespect to him and his comment about this map, but this map has not been available. I went with another neighbor, walked to the golf course multiple times, trying to see this map. This map became available maybe six months ago, not five years ago, and none of us complained about the golf course when it was laid out. Somebody from the golf course showed up a year, year and a half ago, went directly from my backyard out, and spray painted on the grass, number eight, men's tee box. So I don't, I'm not a very good golfer, but I know that from the men's tee box, from where my house is located, I have no chance of being hit by a golf ball because it's straight out. These other people were a little further down, honestly, I was a little concerned about them, but none of us said anything because it looked like it really wasn't going to be that harmful. Since that time, when they decided to come in and fit the path, and they decided to turn it in from a par three to a par four, and put that tee box on the other side of the road, where we all drive into the addition, that's when things started getting stirred up, and when we saw these tee boxes way down there. We didn't really realize, I did it, we had a Christmas gathering, and at one of the, one of the neighbors that was here, Carolyn, she that used to live over on hole number 17, informed all of us that when she lived there, she lost 17 windshields, car windows, from the front of their house. They couldn't swim in their pool, they lost all of the windows on the back of their house. All I am asking, if you allow him to do this, please do not allow those pro tee boxes to be on the other side of the street. I realize that little kids should not be driving golf balls on city streets, it is upsetting, but people allow their children to do that out there.
I think we've already decided that.
Is that it for sure?
Yes.
They've, they've made the concession.
Okay, so we really still would like to talk to them about the damage to our homes. She talked about countless roofs that she had to buy. While that may be covered by insurance, I'm still out thousands of dollars from my deductible to have the roof replaced. Three or, every three or four years, they were having to get a new roof, from golf ball damage to the top of their roof. They lost so many windows on the backside of their house, they couldn't even keep track of how many they lost. So if you are going to allow them to have that be a par four, there should be some sort of stipulations. It seems unfair to me, I built my house there nine years ago, I paid a premium price to be on the golf course, but I never thought in a million years that I would be on a golf course where I was going to have to replace all my back windows. I talked to a guy yesterday who lives on hole number one, and he has lost three windows in the last five years, and he recently spent a lot of money, apparently there is a screen that you can put over your windows. I'm worried about safety, I'm more worried that every few months, I'm going to be out thousands of dollars buying windows for my house. That's my concern, there's not enough room there, the people that play on this golf course are amateurs. It may be harder than the other course, but honestly, the people that are playing in Surrey are the neighbors that live there. And none of them that I have seen in my 30 years of living in Surrey Hills is a golfer that is not going to cause problems to the five or six homes that are light up on the east side of the tees if it's a par four. So I really, we, we would love to work with you, Claude, but it just seems crazy that, you know, we built all these homes there, and now we're going to spend thousands and thousands of dollars replacing our roofs and replacing our windows simply because we could not come to an agreement to make this a three instead of a four. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I'll, I'll be the unpopular one here. I'm ready to move for an approval. It's a golf course, that's what we're approving today, and I think the, the issues that have been brought up, while beyond our scope, I, that needs to be in front of someone else. We're here to approve a golf course, that's what goes there. It's been known. So I move for an approval.
I'll second the motion.
Can we stipulate that there will not be a tee box across the street?
They, they made the concession, so, yeah, I mean, if we need to do something to preserve that in the record.
I move for approval as amended and discussed.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioners, if you'll cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Item 13 is case PV102, it's to vacate a portion of the final plat at Doe Crossing.
I'm Tony Meek with Meek Construction on behalf of the homeowners. Essentially, this is just a, a two-lot plat that was done, both homeowners I'm representing. It was from a previous owner they bought it from, had a engineer design it, and we were told that essentially it was with a template that he used, and it had on there that it required a sidewalk, nowhere else on 149th. Is there a sidewalk, and we're just asking to vacate that.
Yeah, there's no sidewalks, not even in the neighborhood adjacent to it. I would move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve item number 13. If you cast your votes, please. It's approved.
Thank you.
Item 14 is PUD 1663 to rezone 11900 North Coltrane, from PUD 58A to PUD 1663.
Good afternoon, Bradery, the Crafton Toll, 300 Point Parkway Boulevard, Yukon, Oklahoma. On the rezoning application, we agree with the staff TEs, we agreed prior to eliminate the verbiage from section 9.9 about the one car per unit. If you have any particular questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is there anybody else present who wishes to be heard on this matter today? Commissioners?
If there's no discussion on the matter, I'd move for approval.
Second.
I did have one question. Sorry. Last time we talked, and you might have just said this, I was looking at something and I heard, but last time we talked, we had discussed the driveway widths being taller.
Yes, and I was unable to find what you're referring to, but we will agree with the city standard on driveways.
Got it.
Give me just a minute here. There is one issue about, that is part of the zoning request, and it has to do with parking. Staff report indicates that there's one parking space per unit, but that parking space is not required to be on the lot.
Yeah, that was in section 9.9, and we did agree to remove that verbiage.
Okay, sorry. All right. So where are we? We have a motion?
A second.
And a second to approve item number 14 as amended. Is that right? It is approved.
Item number 15 is KC 6948, the preliminary plat of Oakdale Gardens.
And commissioners, before we proceed here, this staff has become aware, I guess, since we got our staff reports, there actually is a second variance that's required on this item, a variance to 5.2, the subdivision regulations relating to minimum intersection spacing along major streets. Separation should be 400 or 500 feet here. The applicant is requesting spacing of approximately 400 feet for two intersections along North Coltrane. We would have to have six affirmative votes for each of the variances. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Good morning. Bradery, the Crafton Toll. The variance request that was actually brought up by us, it wasn't put in the staff report. We have, like I said, approximately 400 feet. We, after talking with the neighbors and, you know, the terms that they had before, less tying into their road, we looked at adding a second entrance onto Coltrane. It's approximately 400 feet away. Traffic has gone out there, and there's no sight distance issues with the second point of access, but we would require a variance on that.
And I would note that that variance was created as a result of disagreement with the neighbors, just as a reminder, about the other second point of access that existed. So they essentially were forced here to make a concession, and I think they've done that in a way that is the, you know, essentially the least offensive way to the subdivision regulation.
Yeah. I went out and drove this just for that gimmick because we've looked at it so much. And honestly, I wouldn't want to come in on that other road, you know, from the north It would be best to have, you know, your own stuff.
Is there anybody present who wishes to be heard on this item? Commissioners?
What was the variance that wasn't listed? What's the subdivision regulation? 5.2?
It's figure 5.2.
Yes.
It's not the actual section. It's the one figure that has some verbiage in it.
That's sufficient to properly identify it. If there's no further discussion, I'll move for approval of variance 5.2.
Second. I have a motion, a second, to approve the variance to figure 5.2. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
I make a motion to approve the variance to section 5.4.2E.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the variance to section 5.4.2E. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
I make a motion to approve the application.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve application. Item number 15. Could you cast your votes, please?
Thank you.
It is approved.
We're going to circle back around to item number four, which is ABC 918.
Is the applicant present? You've been waiting a while.
Well, just enjoying that golf course discussion.
So were we.
We'll not be putting any fairways in any future projects.
And give us your name and address for the record, please. Tell us what it is you're asking for.
Josh Livingston, 1721 West Main Street. And we are dealing with an old proximity of old residential properties that are no longer active in our effort to gain ABC approval for 1201 West Reno. Long ago, back before I-40, this was Washington Boulevard in a residential community, and that's long since been dead away with. But because of some of the legacy R3 zoning classifications, we cannot get an ABC license at the building without going through this process. That's why we are here.
So we're going to drink and throw axes?
Well, it's not just that. The likely use of the rest of the building would be some type of restaurant food service in the remaining 4,000 square feet of the space. But what sort of initiated this process is the tenant in the 1,600 square foot space that they'd be allowed to serve drinks. And they have a seating and food and kind of hangout area, and so a lot of companies that have company parties or birthday parties or what have you, you know, people will bring pizza and soft drinks and things like that. And at their other locations around the U.S., I believe all of them except for one, and all of their Canadian locations, this is their business model where they have alcoholic beverages there, kind of like bowling or throwing darts.
Isn't it already BYOB?
I don't know the, I mean, I've been there to a private party, and we brought beer and our own food. And they started this process several months ago. I'm here as the building owner and supporting their application, but trying to replicate how they operate at their other locations. If you haven't been there, in terms of how it works, you have a host who is an expert axe-throwing person. This all seems kind of funny. I get it. I thought they were pranking me two years ago when they called me to talk about the building, but it is a thing, you know? It's a very popular and very fast-growing sport. If you, you know, on Instagram or just kind of look around the country, there is a axe-throwing venue in just about every city our size or larger, so it's a thing.
Unless anybody's got any questions, I'm ready to make a motion.
Well, I, first of all, want to ask if there's anybody present who wants to be heard on this item today. And I will just offer as commentary, when the shooting range on Wilshire Boulevard came to us with the idea that people were going to have mixed beverage service along with a gun range, that was presented to us in a very specific model where people were not allowed to both drink and shoot guns. So I'm not in a place where I can approve of people drinking and throwing axes. I'm just not, that's just not, can't see it, so.
You're a mom. Have you ever gone, have you been there and participated?
No.
You really have to because it's one of those things like, you know, you, but, well, as the building owner, I need to get this fixed for the property because I am a major part of the Farmers Market District, own other buildings. We are really trying to energize that area, and we have to be, you know, friendly for food service, so we have to be able to drink at this address to make that work for 90% of the restaurants out there. But for the axe-throwing venue, you really just have to go do it sometime, and then you'll be like, oh, I get it. Because, yeah, you kind of picture one thing, and it's not that.
That's like neither here nor there, frankly. I probably would never go throw axes, but that's not the point. I mean, people do all kinds of things that I wouldn't go do, and I'm not adverse to them doing them, but the mixture of that activity and alcohol is something that, and yeah, as a mom, I'll just tell you, been way too many soccer games with parents out of control that, to think that adding alcohol to that mix is a good idea. So alcohol and axes, no.
I agree on guns, but I actually, I mean, I like the analogy to bowling. I mean, you can kill somebody with a bowling ball in the wrong context. I'm going to move for approval.
Second. Sorry, mom.
We have a motion, a second, to approve item number four. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Cheers.
The rest of the items were continued or withdrawn.
So we have, I always, this part's always, planning committees. We actually do have a committee, but it's not really meeting. So planning commission members, anybody have anything they want to add or share?
I have one thing I'd like to, I'd like to share. I really say this with great respect for the people that serve up here as civil servants and are asked to come down here and sit for, today, just two hours, but I'm really saying this on behalf of the applicants. If you are not going to be present for these meetings, as much advance notice as you can provide to the staff is really important because at least then they have the onerous responsibility of reaching out to applicants to let them know that their case, it may not be an appropriate time to be heard if multiple people are going to be gone. It's just good to know that you're not going to be here. And obviously, people get sick, things happen, it's unexpected, but I do think it's appropriate to try to give as much advance notice as you can out of respect for the people that have to come down here and leave their work and all that sort of thing. So if I'm not doing that, you feel free to call me on it, but I think that's a good thing for us to try to do in practice.
I would agree. Anybody else? I don't know where my sheet, shame on me. Planning Department.
Just wanted to remind everyone of our commissioner and committee training that's going to be tomorrow morning, bright and early at 7:30 at 15th and Portland at the central maintenance facility site, and it lasts until 1:00 p.m.
It's where? I'm sorry, I was totally thinking it was downtown.
No, it's at the central maintenance facility training center on 15th and Portland.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I might be able to bring my hazardous waste with me.
Is there something that hasn't been spoken on yet here? Okay. Just want to check it. All right, sorry.
Development Services, municipal councilor, citizens to be heard. You see, we would have gotten to that. And other business? What would that even be? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion, a second, to adjourn. Please cast your votes. We're adjourned. Oh, sorry.